Oh, hey, we're live, guys.
Welcome to the Saratoga Podcast. Hey, Adam. Hey, Dan. How you doing?
Hello.
Hello.
We need, we need some intro music, by the by.
We do need some intro music. Can you compose that in your free time for us, Dan?
I have no talent.
Ron Burgundy has a podcast and he had a whole podcast about picking theme music. So maybe we can do that once it gets a little boring. But today's show is not going to be boring because, boy, there's a lot going on, isn't there, guys?
There is a ton going on, and I have to tell you guys, I am like a little bit fried right now. I have like a city council hangover. Because we had an epic five hour long, totally bananas city council meeting last night. And yours truly went at about 6:45 and it wrapped up almost at 11:30. It was wild.
Wow.
It was wild. I need a bigger reaction there, guys. 11:30 practically.
Well, I'm contemplating. Have you yourself ever sat in such a long meeting?
No, no, I never have. And also, and I'm trying to be like as objective here as possible. I can't remember the last time a council meeting went that off the rails since like, I mean, way back, way, way back. Not even the yep senior years were this bad. You have to, you know, maybe push further back. I know there's been like fights and some pretty heated arguments, but this was five hours of crazy.
Continue though, because I could not get there.
Yes. So I guess before I actually talk about how crazy it was, I just want to say, being on the city council is a really tough job. And so I just have to, you know, give some respect for those five people who were up there last night. It's really hard. You get paid nothing. Everybody's shitting on you all night. It's not fun. So like, I respect their effort. I respect their commitment to the city. But last night was a total, total mess. So it started off, it was really teed up for failure, to be honest with you, because I have this, I have the agenda here. It's all crumpled up for my bag. There were one, two, three, four, five, six public hearings. One of which was the amended chapter 136, which we'll talk about because it's about the bar closing. But then there was, you know, two and a half pages of agenda items. I mean, it was just, there was way too much crammed into this meeting. And from the get go, I knew it was going to be a rough one. When I showed up last night, it was in the music hall in City Hall. And the music hall was packed. There wasn't a seat open. It was totally packed. Which was really actually kind of encouraging in a way, because there was so much going on at this meeting and so much that I personally felt passionate about. So seeing the community come out and also feeling so passionately about it was a good thing. But it also meant for, it was going to be a crazy long meeting. So let's just get into it. One of the first public hearings that happened that began this kind of controversy of the meeting was the amended chapter 136 issue. So what this is, is basically Commissioner Jim Montenio wants to get the bars shut at 2:00 AM. But there's only two avenues to do that legally. One is going through the county board of supervisors. And they would have to vote on the 2:00 AM closing because it affects the entire county. And then it would go on to the state and the SLA would eventually have to approve it and so on and so forth. So this is an avenue, however, that over the last many, many years, several city councils have tried to do this and failed. Because the county board of supervisors has literally no appetite to do this at all. Tara Gaston in Matt Beach, especially Supervisor Beach, has also expressed his personal opposition to this. And so we've never really had a legitimate effort with the county to make this happen. And it appears that there's still no appetite from the county, but I can't really say for sure, because I'm not sure this city council has really made that effort yet. The only other avenue that I'm aware of would be going through the state legislature to carve out like a home rule just for Saratoga Springs, the city of Saratoga Springs. But obviously convincing the entire New York state legislature to take up a piece of legislation is also rather daunting. So instead of taking either one of those avenues, Commissioner Montenio instead decided to take the language around chapter 136, eating and drinking licenses. Which is something that the city of Saratoga Springs issues to any restaurant or bar that's operating in the city. And it's renewed on a yearly basis. And so he thought he could take that and insert new language that set up a series of circumstances under which the city could revoke a bar or restaurants eating and drinking license. And some of the circumstances, do I have them? I do have them. So some of the circumstances include things like this. A patron or guest of the permitted premises left said premises between 2:00 AM and 8:00 AM. And with one hour of leaving the permitted premises, committed a criminal offense. So if you go to a bar and you leave at 2:00 AM and within the next hour, you commit a crime anywhere. Doesn't matter what the crime is. That's reason enough for the city to then go in and pull the bar's eating and drinking license.
Can I interrupt you? If you're alleged to have committed a crime, not even convicted.
You don't have to be convicted.
Important point.
That is a very important point. So Adam, you could tie one on, go to some bars downtown, decide to go somewhere else at 2:00 in the morning, drive up to Glens Falls. I don't know. Have a, you could do anything wrong in Glens Falls and that would be the fault of the bar in Saratoga. Which you have.
In your younger days.
In my younger days.
I also.
Yeah, as somebody who, and this got voted down, right?
Yeah. So basically what happened was that there are a ton of people that came out against this. And it wasn't that everyone was against the 2:00 AM closing, which was also kind of my position. I'm for the 2:00 AM closing. But this resolution right here, first of all, Commissioner Montenio didn't upload this actual resolution until the very last minute. So Robyn Dahl, geek that I am, I had been on the city council agenda looking at these things all Monday and Tuesday. And what I was looking at was like a fraction of this. That's what he had up. And then I get to the meeting and it turns out he's changed the entire thing and it's two pages.
So that's evolved.
Oh, yeah. It literally, last week it was like this long and now it was two pages. But the spirit is exactly the same and it's still just a piece, it's a trash resolution. It would be litigated. It wouldn't hold up in a court of law. It's not enforceable. And it was kind of disturbing last night because there was one comment made by Gordon Boyd, who you guys may know, he's been fairly active politically. He was like, we should do the, we have to do the 2:00 AM closing by any means necessary. And if this gets litigated, take it to court. And I'm like, that is just, in my opinion, a terrible approach. I don't want my taxpayer money, you know, paying for litigation because we rushed something and decided to like turn it around within a week and it was unenforceable and not legal. So ultimately, thank God, the city council voted no to this.
Barely, right? Three to two?
Jason, yes. Commissioner Jason Golub, Commissioner Manita Songvi and Commissioner Dylan Moran all voted no. Mayor Kim and Commissioner Montenio voted yes. It failed. It was the second to last item, actually might have been the dead last item at the meeting. So all the people who came in the beginning. I mean, I think a lot of them went home and continued watching. I encouraged the mayor and the commissioner to move it up the agenda, because when you have so many people turning out for something like this, it's just ridiculous to make them wait, in this case, like four and a half hours to get to the vote. But anyway, they voted it down, which I think was a good thing, but it certainly wasn't without a lot of drama first.
Yeah, as a, as a, growing up in an entrepreneurial family, being an entrepreneur myself, you know, this, this big government oversight cracking the whip down on you. I mean, I think they lose sight that the bar owners are, they, they, they're supporting their families. They're supporting their, their communities. I mean, these are the people who support the sports teams. And so for, for the government to just to come in and try to circumvent a law, whether they like it or not, this is not how this law was set up to work. It's not meant to Saratoga County. Now, if they want to change that, they should change that through the legislation process, not through the legal process. So I am all for big government and not having the power just to come down willy nilly and, and, and kind of arbitrarily take away of somebody's building or a company's or a small bar restaurant's ability to provide food and drinks and make money.
I also think, first of all, are you in like a flak jacket, Adam? That just, I just.
Yeah, yeah. I was gonna, I was gonna get to this later. It's all about, we're going.
Okay, okay, all right. I'll try not to get distracted by that.
We're eight minutes into this. You just, you just discovered that?
I, I'm having a crazy day.
Fashionable, like, the fashion gap these days is a little off the wall, but we'll, we'll get to it later to stick on this topic, but.
So basically what's troubling to me about this is that this is not the first time Commissioner Montenio has drafted a resolution that is on its face not enforceable or not legal. And I find it really troubling that he was elected not as the city attorney, but as the commissioner of public safety. And yet he's trying to take his experience being a family court attorney and settling divorces, he like arbitrated divorces. He's trying to take that experience and not use our city attorney, but write his own resolution. And that kind of just is this backdoor approach to getting something done that really is completely ineffective. And in my opinion, just totally performative. And this is really reminiscent to me of the aggressive panhandling.
I don't know that we know this is illegal and not enforceable, right?
Well, the legal opinions I've gotten have, have, have been pretty consistent.
Yeah, but, but, but again, you're not an attorney. I'm an attorney, Dan. I don't know if you're, you're, you're.
It's admittedly, it's not, it's not an area I have expertise in.
Right, right.
So I'm siding with Robyn though. It seems like it's going to be a litigation magnet. At the very least, we know we get two or three years of litigation out of it. Sorry, Adam.
It's gonna be a nightmare. But it's, what, so what is this? What, what, I mean, if, Robyn, Dan, if you were on that, that, I think, I think most people at this point want bars to close at two. What should our city council be doing, right? They tried something. This is not the right way. They should be lobbying, could Kerry Warner, you know, do something at the state level for us.
Do you know what I would do? Honestly, my recommendation, back in August 2021, it was Chief Crooks from our police department that raised this issue with us. And he said, listen, he brought statistics, he brought all the numbers and he pointed out, you know, how many arrests were being made between 2:00 and 4:00 AM. And he also talked about the real risk that he was seeing, the risk potential for his officers to get injured was inevitable in his mind. And.
As we saw with the shootout.
Yeah, and Sheriff Zerlo agreed. And so if it were me, I would make a real effort to contact Sheriff Zerlo and Chief Crooks and see if they would meet with me and key members of that county board of supervisors, because it's a weighted vote. You don't need to get like an actual majority of the 22 or however many supervisors there are. But like really take some time and make an effort to, you know, contact the Phil Barretts, contact the people who are the kind of Northway corridor group. And bring the chief and bring the sheriff and really try to appeal to them, because we are taking up so many of the resources from the sheriff's department during the summer to back up our guys in the summer months, that it really does put a strain on their ability to police the entire county. And I would imagine they would want those resources back. And so it's really in their best interest to, you know, help us facilitate this 2:00 AM closing. And I think there are a lot of people out there who are like, I don't know if it'll work, blah, blah, blah. Let's try it and see if it works. You know, try for a year, see if it works. We don't know. We just don't know. And at this point, to me, that's the best path forward.
I'd love to see a list of bars in the county outside of Saratoga Springs that stay open after 2:00 AM.
I tried. I tried. It's like, I think it's like a tiny handful.
Yeah, I bet you it'd be more than you guys think, right? I bet you there's some watering holes, but anyway.
Yeah, anyhow.
All right. What else, what else we got?
Yeah, we gotta move on. So we also had a very contentious discussion over proposed raises for the five deputy commissioners or the four deputy commissioners and deputy mayor. So basically kind of, just kind of out of the clear blue sky. Last Friday, I saw that the city council and Commissioner Moran had put on his agenda a proposal to give the deputies raises that were really significant. At the time he proposed it, it was about a 30% raise, taking their salary from $79,000 to $107,000. And then there were a lot of incentives layered on top of that. You know, it was an amazing healthcare plan. It was more vacation days. They, people could cash in their vacation days at the end of the year if they hadn't used them, or I'm sorry, sick days, if they hadn't used them at the end of the year. There are things like up to $5,000 per year for professional development. So whether that's continuing education, special events. And I was really stunned by it because I have never really heard anyone say that deputies aren't being compensated enough. But they're also political appointees. So they don't have to have any special skills, any civil service testing. They are just pure political appointments that are two years in length. And so I also know that the city hall employees were tremendous during COVID in 2020, when we were doing that budget. And they worked with us to save over a million dollars of their own, you know, compensation that they're legally entitled to, to get through the COVID budget without layoffs. And it was a really inspiring moment where they just, you know, realized that the shared sacrifice would be worth it to keep everyone's job. And they really acted in good faith. And they haven't been made whole completely from that, because you know, all this money compounds, it's all percentages. And so they've been fighting for a two and a half percent raise. I know it's CSEA and have not been successful. And so to turn around in the midst of that situation and decide that you're going to give five people a 30% raise. It just, it was just really, it was really insulting. The city hall employees were destroyed really with morale, which is already low. This was really, really hurt them a lot, I know. Also, the deputies themselves were the ones who drafted the resolution. So like, I don't know if you guys have ever been in a job where you've been there for 11 months and your boss is like, hey, do you want a raise? And you're like, yeah, I haven't even been here a year, but yeah. And he's like, oh, here's a blank check. Write whatever you want. But that's like, that's what this seemed like. And I just, again, I don't know why this came about. But I also think if we're going to make an investment in anyone, let's not do it with the people who are going to walk out the door in two years. Like, I don't know why I would want to pay $5,000 to any deputy, knowing that they're going to take that and leave as opposed to the city hall employees who have been there for so long.
Yeah, we've, we've already seen a kind of an exodus of city hall employees and, and, you know, I hate to say it, but it really ties, comes, a lot of it comes back to the, the atmosphere that this current city council sets at city hall. A lot of employees don't feel valued there. And to, you know, and city halls run by, run by CSEA, you know, their union employees and to, to come out with this giant Cadillac of a, of a raise for the non-union appointees, you know, and continuing education, they're there for two years theoretically. Why do we want to pay for their education? I think it rubbed a lot of people the wrong way. And I think a lot of people got up and let the council know that.
Yeah, correct. And they did adjust the resolution before it went on the agenda last night. And so they adjusted it down to, I think, 97,000. They trimmed some of the benefits a bit. And, but they still had like the $5,000 continuing education incentive and so forth. The one kind of commonality, though, between people who were against this and has like a little exception was over Deputy Joe O'Neal, because he's the only deputy that's been there for longer than 11 months. And he's the public works deputy and he's been there for over five years. And although he gets the CSE raises, they really haven't been significant. So his salary's been, you know, you know, it hasn't gone up tremendously. And I think everyone agrees that he does an incredible job. And his position as deputy of the public works department is so much more involved and so much more time consuming than some of the other deputy positions. So a lot of people encouraged the public works department to try to find a way to work with HR and see how he could be compensated for his longevity.
So we create a step system for time in the job, much like the police department has the fire department. The fighter job gets paid more than the shooter job.
Well. Salaries are tied to CSEA. So where is that, where is that written? That, that they, that the deputy's salary increases? That's not a charter thing.
So we had a, so every year usually it's a, it's a non-union employee resolution that addresses the deputy positions. But I forget what I was just going to say.
The steps.
Oh, there was longevity built into the resolution that was proposed last night. But it was so much more significant than longevity pay with some of the unions. It was like, you know, basically a city hall employee who's been there for over 19 years would be getting less longevity than a deputy who's been there for two years. It was, it was just, it was really ass backwards.
And that got voted down as well, correct?
That got voted down as well. I will say Commissioner Golub was the voice of reason on this one. It got very contentious. Commissioner Songvi was vehemently against this and she rattled off a whole series of numbers, talking about how, how expensive this was and how the, the money compounds and so forth. And those numbers were disputed by Commissioner Moran, who said those numbers were incorrect. At one point, Commissioner Songvi asked anyone at the gallery if they would take out a calculator and add them up while she read them out. I mean, it got really wild. It got very heated. And so there was this fundamental disagreement over the numbers. And the finance department was saying one thing and Commissioner Rand was saying another. But at the end of the day, Commissioner Golub stepped in kind of as the voice of reason and was like, what I'm hearing here is that basically everybody needs more money. You know, the CSEA employees, city hall, but everyone's suffering from inflation and all the rising costs, et cetera. And at the end of the day, everybody needs more money. Whether that's doable with the budget they have or not, I don't know. But ultimately, this was tabled. So they could explore different options for all parties.
Wait, it was tabled or voted on and failed?
It was ta, it was tabled. It was tabled.
Okay, that seems to be a prudent way to go at this point.
Yes. And one of the things that did come up was apparently city hall, the mayor's department offered CSEA employees $1,000 each, as opposed to a two and a half percent raise as some kind of like, you know, incentive bonus. And I think that was pretty insulting for the CSEA members to be offered $1,000 and then have this resolution come up that gives, you know, nearly 30% raises to deputies.
The timing and the optics of that is just, just horrible. If you want to destroy morale, that was the, that was the blueprint to do it.
Yeah, it was, it was really terrible. And also it was what, two weeks after they passed the budget? So it was just, there was a lot of conflict with this. But ultimately it was tabled. So then, let's see, what else did we move on to that was also?
We're at home here, by the way.
I know. What was the next one? Why am I spacing out? Oh, Karen Hagan. How did I forget this? So we talked about this a bit last week. The city council and all city hall employees are currently under a gag order that was issued by Supreme Court Judge Diane Freestone at the behest of DA Karen Hagan, because Commissioner Montenio and Mayor Ron Kim came out after the shooting on November 20th and had a press conference hours after the shooting had occurred, in which they released body camera footage, audio and information that was incorrect and also speculative in nature. And we have learned that our police department and our police chief, the state police and the district attorney all pled with Mayor Kim and Commissioner Montenio to collaborate with them on the release of information such that it didn't negatively affect the investigation. And both Mayor Kim and Commissioner Montenio basically gave them the finger and were like, screw you. We're doing this on our own, no matter what. Don't tell us what to do. We're going to release whatever we want. And the information they released and how they went about it ended up damaging the investigation, per the DA and impeding her ability to prosecute the individuals who broke the law that night. And I think that's a really tragic thing. But instead of being kind of ashamed of this and like embarrassed about what they had done, Mayor Kim and Commissioner Montenio wanted to hire outside counsel to litigate the gag order and try to get it lifted. Which is just, again, totally asinine, totally ridiculous. This gag order expires on December 22nd. And so my question is like, what the hell is it that you guys have to say to the public in the next, you know, whatever it is, 16 days? That would necessitate litigating this issue. It's absurd. So there was a special city council meeting on Friday. They debated this, they debated this. We also learned that Tony Izzo, the city attorney, had not been consulted about this. We learned that the city council didn't even know Mayor Kim and Commissioner Montenio were having a press conference. We learned that the DA came all the way down to city hall on that Sunday morning to beg, beg, beg them to not do it. Ultimately, last night.
Do you think beg was the operative verb?
No, actually I don't. Let me rephrase. To tell them not to do it. And they disregarded that advice. So last night, after much discussion, they decided to send a group of people to meet with Karen Hagan and try to have a meeting and not, you know, litigate and, and do all the other shit that they were suggesting. And so the group they settled on after much discussion was Tony Izzo, Deputy Angela Rela, who's the deputy mayor, and Commissioner Montenio.
No police chief.
No police, I'm like, why can't, I mean, son of, why, isn't it the first person you would think of?
First person, yeah.
I also, I also last night read a public comment, which got a little heated, to be honest with you. But one of the things I was reading, because I think it's really important, is the Saratoga Springs Police Department media relations policy, which is like 324.2 in the policy manual. And it says, "It's the policy of the Saratoga Springs Police Department to protect the privacy rights of individuals while releasing non-confidential information to the media regarding topics of public concern. Information that has the potential to negatively affect investigations will not be released. The ultimate authority and responsibility for the release of information to the media shall remain with the chief of police."
Yeah.
Commissioner Montenio violated his own policy.
We.
How, if you're going to disregard the policies of your own department as the commissioner, what kind of example does that set? I'm telling you, you guys, in my opinion, this guy is not fit to be serving in this position. He is just not.
Yeah, we, you know, we talked about, there are times where there's need for transparency. This was not, this was not one of them. It could have been done with a statement. And then the fact to double down on this, to just release it and then double down and throw a hissy fit and say, you want to release more? What, what, why are you fighting this gag order? Why are you wasting time? Why are you, why, why do you want to waste taxpayers' money? Just be quiet. Let the police do what police do, that DAs do what DAs do, because clearly there's no threat to the public. Clearly there's not charges or accusations of improper treatment or improper actions by our police officers. So, you know, this is not, this is, this is just, it's, it's, it comes down to ego and this is not something that should be at city hall, city council meetings.
If they were released, sorry, Adam, if they were released maybe 20%, maybe 40% of what they did. I, I get that, right? But they want, when the district attorney, the district attorney, that should mean something to police agents. That should mean something. You're going to screw up this, this whole investigation and ultimately the prosecution. Ah, too bad, so sad.
I know. And you guys think about how many agencies were involved. It was our police department, the state police, the DA. They have to alert the attorney general's office when there's an officer involved shooting. There's the Vermont Police Department, right? Because it's one of their officers that was involved. And then potentially the Utica Police Department, although that item, that fact has not been confirmed. So you have a ton of agencies involved here. And all they were asking was to coordinate the release of information. They weren't saying no. They were just saying, please, talk to us, collaborate and coordinate with us so we can release this in the most responsible and transparent way possible. And the mayor and the commissioner just don't give a shit.
So was this, was this voted or voted down?
Um, it was not voted on in its current form and instead they decided to do the meeting instead.
Oh, they're going to do this meeting.
Yeah.
They did have threats associated with those meetings, right? If this meeting doesn't happen.
Guys, they were like, literally when they were talking about this, they were like, we want to meet with District Attorney Karen Hagan and she needs to tell us what information is so sensitive and what information was affecting this investigation negatively. And then she needs to lift the gag order and then maybe we won't litigate.
I thought it was like, lift the gag order even before the meeting is what I thought.
You want her to tell you the stuff you're not supposed to say and then also lift the order that says you got to stop talking.
Yeah, it, it, it's, government doesn't work that way. The county, the county supersedes the city. The state supersedes the county. This is, this is not, it's, like it or not, it's, it's how it works. Sometimes it's frustrating, like it is with the 2:00 AM bar closing, but we don't tell the county what to do.
And you guys, don't you think all Saratogians would agree that the most important thing right now is making sure we have a successful prosecution?
Yeah.
I mean, can you imagine being the officers that responded? And this is what's now happening?
They could release a portion of what they did with approval of the district attorney's office and the police department's involved.
But I still don't understand.
And the public would have been satisfied and the prosecution will still be intact.
But I don't know, Dan, what would releasing any of it solve? I mean, again, with no, with no accusations of misuse by police. I mean, maybe just a part where our, our police officer is saying, put your gun down. Maybe that, but I just don't, I, there, there's, there was no accusations. There's no continued threat to the public. Just everybody shut up and let the, that, that, you know, the, the police and DA do their, you know, seek justice.
I think the public would want and have a right to know at least the bare bones of information, if nothing else, Adam, is there is no ongoing threat to the public.
Yeah.
That's more than zero.
I just feel like.
If it's not there, that might have been sufficient, but at least that much.
Yeah.
Yeah. There was also an interesting report by WNYT that came out a day or two ago. And it included some language from, I believe it was the Vermont Police Department's, or it was the attorney for the deputy with the Vermont Police. And they kind of zoomed in on the footage and highlighted a few things and basically said that their client was the victim of a gang assault. And so again, it's just, you can see the subtleties and nuance of this are very complex. And there's going to be a lot of people asserting, you know, who did what and who was responsible. And this was just, it was just not the moment to have a knee jerk press conference, not talk to anybody. And I don't know what's wrong with these people. I just don't. I don't think Commissioner Montenio is capable of collaborating with anyone. Honest to God, he really isn't. And he, we've got two people, a bankruptcy attorney and a family law attorney, who think for some reason they can write legal documents that they don't have any expertise on at all. It's, it's really mind blowing.
It's, it's been continuing. It's not, this is not a one off.
I know.
This has been, and, and I like Ron Kim, I really do, but he's made mistakes. He's made mistakes that, that he's repeated. And they, they're, you know, disconcerting.
So listen, we have a lot of guests that need to come on, but I just want to add one last comment about Mayor Kim. I thought I would be a grown up and mature individual and send Mayor Kim a one line text message thanking him for his position on one of the resolutions last night. I sent this text and he responded, please do not contact me again.
Yowch.
And I was like, ah, I can show you guys. And he said, please, he said, please stop contacting me. And I said, you're a public servant, deal with it. I also have contacted him, I've sent him three text messages that were one line in the last six months. So it's not like I'm burning this guy's phone up. But I, it's a, we're in a tiny little city. He's the mayor. I'm sorry, you don't tell any constituent, stop contacting me. I don't care how much you dislike them. He is like, he's like a man child. Sorry. Sorry. All right, anyhow. Shall we move on? Do you guys have any other comments on this before we move on?
Yeah, well, you mentioned guests, right? We should probably get them on.
Yes, yes. Okay, so we're going to do a big left turn here, change of pace. Um, I know, uh, I do, well, maybe we can talk about this again a little later, but there was, there was so much dysfunction outside of these three resolutions last night. There were accusations from commissioners that their agenda was being manipulated before it was, after it was published. And so, the agenda as it read was not what they had sent in for the agenda. There were accusations of the mayor and commissioners saying like, "You haven't spoke to me in seven months." I mean, it was, I just encourage everyone to go on the city website and just watch a little bit of this after it's posted.
You know what I found? Even though this was a five-hour-long meeting, you can, if you go back and watch it retroactively, you could speed it up. So about a one-and-a-half times speed, you know, it'll, it'll cut the meeting in half and, and you could slow down for the interesting parts. But you know what I'm looking forward to is just seeing who, who runs again. You know, we, we're grinding closer to decision times. It's, it's, this has been a interesting, you know, year, almost a year with the city council.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't know. I don't- They all thought none of them could run. It wouldn't surprise me.
If anyone's listening to this who is interested in running for public office, we could really use a good mayoral candidate and a good public safety candidate at a minimum to challenge some of these folks. So, contact the Democratic City Committee or the Republican City Committee because they are going to start interviewing candidates for endorsements, probably at the end of January, early February. And people will be endorsed by the beginning of March. So, we are coming right up on election season for Saratoga Springs, which is a little exhausting given the pace of politics and the craziness that's been going on. But what are you going to do? All right, should we do our left turn here?
Do it.
Go for it.
Okay, we're going to bring in Robert Millis. Bob Millis, are you with us? Hello?
Hi. Hello there. How are you guys?
Good. We're super excited to have you on because you have undertaken a pretty big lift here, but it's really exciting. You have taken our New Year's Eve event that we've had in Saratoga and are completely revamping it and relaunching it again this year as the Saratoga New Year's Eve Fest. And I would love to hear, you know, what you've been doing and what the lineup of events are and just all the exciting elements of this new New Year's Eve festival.
Uh, yes, it's called the Saratoga New Year's Fest.
Oh, wait, hold on, I'm sorry. Bob, we also have Commissioner Moran. I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you.
I thought so, yeah.
Commissioner Moran that I want to bring on too because he's also a pivotal organizer. Commissioner Moran, thank you so much for joining us.
Thanks for having me, guys. Nice to see you. How you doing, Bob?
Nice.
Yeah, I know you guys have worked hard on this New Year's Eve Fest and, and I was at the press conference and you guys want to, like Robin said, let's, let's hear what you got to say about it.
I would, um, I would, you know, first offer that, you know, within the Office of Accounts, special events is a big part of what we do. The, the special events drive a tremendous amount of economic activity in the city. And when you look at the totality of the year and sales tax revenue, it was a real big tent pole at one point in time in the fourth quarter to have that event. Now, the, the previous first-night event, just so everyone understands kind of the, the background and then I'll, I'll, I'll transition it over to Bob. But first night was a, was a trademarked organization. You had to operate by their rules, which was no alcohol, all local musicians, several other issues, or rather, aspects of how the, 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 the night would be managed. Very successful, right? We started out small. We ultimately put Albany out of the New Year's Eve business. But like everything, you know, after a while, it starts to grow a little long in the tooth. The well's only so deep as it relates to local artists. We've got a tremendous community full of musicians of all genres. But after 20-something years, the public's looking for something a little bit different. And the last three years, I don't want to get into the details of it, but the last three years that it was run by Saratoga Arts as a non-for-profit event, it lost money. And that's not a tenable thing for a, for a non-for-profit to be involved in. Bob and I have known each other for several years. I couldn't pin it down. He actually grew up with my uncle, Uncle David. He and I both were at the Allman Brothers concert in 1971 at Skidmore. So we'll, we'll give that to you as well. But, um, we've been talking a lot about the reinvention of that event prior to COVID, during COVID. And obviously, getting the opportunity to serve the community, I have now the ability to help drive what it is that we're, that we're now proposing and presenting. So, basically, we pulled together some key partners and the city being one of them. And we've really dramatically changed the layout of the night, the fact that it's now a multi-event. And with that, I've transitioned it over to Bob because, you know, he's really done a tremendous job pulling things together. And again, it's, it's, it's been really great working together.
Bob, the music man, tell us, tell us about all the talent you've been able to pull in for this event.
Yeah, yeah, we've, we made the conscious decision to do a couple of things. One is to go with, believe it or not, fewer, fewer shows and do it in fewer venues. But the trade-off there is we are kind of dividing it in half between local, regional musicians on one end, but we're also bringing in national musicians on this. And we think that's important for the reason Dylan just said, you know, we, we want, we're, we're kind of transitioning this thing to more of a music festival than it is a New Year's party, if you will.
Can people have a cocktail while they're watching these musicians?
Well, well, yeah, because the fundamental, one of the fundamental reasons we had to get rid of the first-night franchise agreement is we, we wanted to open this up to local venues. But the first-night regulation said, you can't do that if they're serving liquor at the time. So we, you know, we wanted places like Putnam Place, The Parting Glass, uh-
Yeah, Saratoga.
The Inn at Saratoga, uh, to get involved. And, and, and we knew we weren't going to go to these folks and say, hey, if you want to be involved, you got to shut down your bar on New Year's Eve, which this year happens to be on a Saturday night. So, so yeah, if, if you go to Putnam Place to see some of the shows, they're, they're going to be, be serving you. If you go to The Parting Glass, like always, they're going to be serving you. But that said, our, our musical lineup, I think, is different from the past in that it's more of a music lovers type of thing. So people are coming to see the musicians. Our demographic is a little older than in the past. I can tell by the ticket sales. So it's going to be a better behaved crowd. We know that. Uh, and, and the other aspect is it's all indoors. Uh, first night in the past used to have this environment of people would come and watch musicians on the street and storefront windows and that kind of- We're not, we're not doing that. Uh, we, this, this is, uh, you know, we have 20, you know, we have 30 bands on 12 stages around town. You're coming to see a high-end show in a respectable environment. And it's going to work. We're going to have fun.
Bob, can you give us a, a couple of the musicians' names that you think people will be the most excited about?
Yeah, probably top of the heap is Cowboy Junkies. The famed Canadian alternative blues band that was big in the middle 90s, you know? Canadian Hall of Fame, uh, you know, 20 million records sold. The Samples, who, any, you know, any local person that was in college in the 1990s in America are going to know who the samples are. Jeffrey Gaines, famous singer-songwriter. An act I'm really psyched about, an international, internationally famous jazz funk act called the Delvon Lamar Organ Trio. And on and on, uh, we got a, we got a big-time Jamaican reggae band. We have a, uh, we have a room with just blues musicians in it, including a BMA-nominated Blues Artist of the Year is in our blues room. We have a country music room. We have, uh, obviously, The Parting Glass, it's going to be turned into the Irish pub with two live bands. So there's a wide, a wide-
Bob, where am I going for my hip-hop? Where am I going for my rap?
Commissioner Montenino said we couldn't have any.
I know. I do turn into a salad when I start listening to it. So that's probably a good idea.
No, no, let's, let's not go there. We'll have that discussion afterwards. This is out of the way.
How do people buy tickets? I mean, people are watching this and they may want to get a gift for their parents or something. Where do you want to get tickets and what are the tickets entail?
Yes, thank you. The easiest way is just to go online to saratoganewyoursefest.com. One click, you can buy tickets. $20.
Yeah, they're really reasonable, really reasonable.
$20. And we have some VIP options. We're serving dinner for some folks and we have upgrades for seats. But 20 bucks, you can see 30 bands on 12 stages. New Year's Eve, and we're even doing a pre-party the night before with a famous reggae band and a famous jazz band the night before. And, and the other two major aspects of this thing, as always, that we've kept, is there's a 5K road race. Let's not forget that. Uh, we moved that, we, we've moved it to Sunday. So that's going to happen now, Sunday, 11:00 AM downtown, which is a change.
Bold move.
You know, you know the question everyone's going to ask though, are there fireworks?
Indeed. I've, I've learned what a, I've learned what a hot-button fireworks and the answer is yes.
You're not going to do a laser show and call it fireworks?
Real fireworks. And, and, and a couple changes there. A, downtown. B, you know, uh, it's going to be, it's going to be launched from the top deck of the parking garage. And it's going to be at 6, it's going to be at 6:00 PM.
Let me, let me address that if I may. So, there's legitimate reasons why we had to stop doing fireworks. Robin's probably aware of this. But fire code changed. And where we typically shot them off from within Congress Park, it ultimately was no longer a feasible facility that could safely host such an event. So, while COVID certainly played a part in them disappearing, there was a larger regulatory issue that was driving that. And so with the help of Marilyn Rivers and Aaron, Assistant Chief Aaron Dyer, with, with Ryan McMahon at the city center, and obviously, the, the vendor, we've worked through all of the issues. And so, there will be cordoned-off areas where people won't be able to stand and watch because that's the landing zone for spent shells and things like that. But with them starting off at such a higher level than where they were before, I really think you're going to be able to see them all over town. And I think it's going to be spectacular. And then again, and one really nice thing is, so this is something I did last evening on Saturday. There's events before this. So, Congress Park, weather permitting, we're going to be skating in Congress Park.
Yay!
Okay, the carousel is going to be open from 11:00 to 4:00 with free rides for everybody. So, you know, 4th of July, people used to camp out, kind of wait for those fireworks to come. We wanted to give people things to do to get them around town. And so, John Holman from the Rec Department is, is handling kind of the skates. We're doing that out of the kiosk on Broadway, kind of little visitor center, not the visitor center across the street, but rather kind of a little informational kiosk. So that should be great. And then launching them, you know, slightly after 6 o'clock.
Can I just thank you as a, I'm sorry to interrupt, as a parent of four young children, I just want to say, that is freaking awesome. Because my kids want to see the fireworks. They love them. But staying up till midnight is not feasible for four little kids. And 6:00 PM is fantastic. Also, when we went to Congress Park to listen to them, I'm noise-sensitive. It was like, it was deafening. It was the loudest fireworks I've ever heard in my life. Too loud, you know? And it, it did feel a little precarious where they were going off and where we were. So I think that the parking garage is phenomenal.
What parking garage?
The city center.
As I call it, the albatross, the big thing thing.
Oh, the city center parking garage.
Yeah. Um, but to be able to skate-
Yeah, and the cordoned-off area will be Flat Rock Park. That's basically the general landing area. So there's going to be a viewing area from Ellsworth Jones Place right in front of the city center. I think that's going to be a great place for people to go and watch the fireworks. But you think about it, there's a lot of places with outdoor patios or, or rooftop decks that could really have a really interesting look at fireworks. But the other aspect too, and I think we'll, we'll get into this more later, you know, when we're planning for next year, but they have silent fireworks now, where you get the light show, but you don't necessarily have the boom. That's interesting to me. You know, I have animals that just absolutely go apoplectic when fireworks go off. And if we could mitigate some of that and still have the majesty, I think that would be a great, a great approach.
Can I jump in there real quick, Benjamin?
Yeah, but, yeah, God.
That's another good reason to get out of Congress Park. The animals, you know, I, I was heartbroken hearing these animals, this cloud of smoke. Not saying moving at a half mile to further isn't going to affect other animals, but they were really affected in Congress Park.
Oh, absolutely.
And so I, I have like a true phobia of loud noises and my dream has been silent fireworks. So Commissioner Moran, if you were able to do that, I am like erecting a statue of you in my backyard. And oh, the silent fireworks. That would be like my dream come true. I could finally enjoy them for the first time in my life.
If they are real and they are accessible, they will absolutely be in the mix of what we're looking to do probably for 4th of July.
Well, I want to thank you both so much for coming on and so much, I, really, you have our, so much of our thanks for taking this on and creating a community event that really appeals to everybody. I know I'm really excited about it. And again, saratoganewyoursefest.com, go get tickets, talk to your friends, talk to your family, start making plans. It sounds like it's going to be an amazing New Year's weekend.
And I would just like, Bob, if you could run down our, our key sponsors, this would not be happening without them. If, 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 again, this ticket price is available because of the generosity of these, these event partners. So, do you have that in front of you, bud?
Yeah, hold up.
Oh.
Well, Golly's waiting. I didn't wear my Jets hat out of respect for Dan. I'm usually wearing my Jets hat at this time of year. I'm wearing my Yankees hat because Aaron Judge is back into the fold. He's going to be the new captain. So I'm pretty excited about that. Yeah, what, nine years, 350 million or something like that?
Something like that. I just, I'm just catching reports of it now, but-
He's going to be Yankee for a while.
See, the reason, the reason I know this, we just got the, we got, just got the posters printed, getting ready to, but yeah, we have to thank, uh, you know, the two key, the two top-level sponsors are Death Wish Coffee and Druthers, who've really come up to bat, especially to keep the fireworks going.
That's awesome.
You wouldn't believe how expensive fireworks are. But these, you know, these, these folks simply came in and says, here, take a chunk of our contribution and devote it to fireworks.
Market 32- I think that's carrying over into the 4th of July too, right, Bob?
Indeed, yes, yes.
That's awesome.
Thank you, Death Wish, and thank you, Druthers, because it's-
Yes, let me just rattle off, let me rattle off the other partners. Adronak Trust Company has stepped up. Price Chopper, Market 32, the Colwell Law Group, Stewart's, Saratoga's Special Assessment District, we thank Harvey. DA Collins, Bonaccio Construction, Courtyard Residence Inn, Hunt Real Estate, Holiday Inn, Global Foundries, Caruso Builders, uh, the Saratoga Hilton. And before I go off, I, I just want to thank Dylan for putting this group together. I, I was going to do this thing on my own, but Dylan says, no, you know, you, you gotta, you gotta get together the local tourism groups. And I go, uh, do I have to? He goes, yeah, at least talk to them. So, and so, so when I got together with the Chamber, the city center, Discover Saratoga, and yes, the city, you know, I walked in that meeting with those folks. I go, this is going to be a quick meeting. This whole thing I got cooking isn't going to work. But lo and behold, they said, where have you been? We've been talking about this for three years. It's not, you know, you're not doing anything new about changing it up. And, and I, you know, I just want to let Saratoga know how lucky they are to have those kind of folks with their, even though they're nonprofits and everything else, they have a private sector mentality to them. So I want the city to know how lucky they are to have all those groups working for them.
Yeah. And, and all those sponsors are people who step up again and again and again with their generosity to support events, causes in the community. And we are, I know, I'm deeply grateful to live someplace where we have such generosity to, you know, to the benefit of the entire community. It's really incredible.
This is going to be my first time going back to live music since before COVID. And I'm like, I'm a freak about music. And so I am just so excited to be, you know, the Victorian streetwalk, to be around that many people again was very exhilarating. And we need that, right? We're not out of the woods yet, but we are at a time when we need to have that inspiration to start getting back, you know, into our old routines of, of, of seeing our friends and family and doing things together. The isolation's been hard, you know, I think it's reflected in-
We've got to connect with the people.
Yeah, but I think the isolation has really reflected itself in so many of the issues that, that, you know, you guys are speaking of earlier. It's been tough. And I'm, I'm just, I'm just really excited for the opportunity to bring the community together.
Bob's got a festival to plan. He ain't got time for it.
Yeah.
No, he's working. There's no doubt.
The small time.
I think we lost hope. I think the, uh, the, the million-dollar question is, will you be at the run the next morning?
I haven't run 5K in like the last decade, so.
Well, I'm impressed that you made it to this because I know you were a champ last night at that marathon meeting. I'm exhausted from it, so I can't imagine how you're feeling and we really appreciate you coming on today.
Yeah, no, thank you so much. You know, again, all of you, I appreciate what you're trying to do. You know, dissemination of information is, it's important. It's, quite honestly, it's vital. And it is broken right now. I am trying every outlet I possibly can to communicate with this community. And, uh, you know, I appreciate what you're trying to do in reaching out and, and, and sharing information. Obviously, we're not necessarily all aligned politically and that's okay. We're all Saratogans and we all love this city.
And this is an open invitation, Commissioner, where if you ever want to come on, you, you know, we don't want to put you guys on the spot. You go through enough, but if you ever want to, you know, get a point across, uh, just, you, you got all of our numbers, let us know.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I mean, I would, I would simply offer, I think, a lot of the issues that we have had- we have had are because we're not doing enough communicating together behind the scenes where we can build that rapport in common purpose. I'm not gonna be someone who plays out in the press with those types of issues. I think it's disrefect, excuse me, disrespectful to the process. Um, and particularly, you know, when it comes to, you know, some of the sensitive issues that, that we were discussing last night. These are, these are not, if it was easy, they would already been fixed. And, um, we have to redouble our efforts. Um, you know, I, I had a great conversation, um, with, uh, with Chief Crooks this morning and, um,
Thank you.
He's, yeah, he's on board, uh, for the, for the committee and, um, you know, kind of Warfield as well.
Do you wanna see what, um, committee that is, Commissioner Moran?
So this is gonna be called the Downtown Safety Committee. Uh, it's a committee I formed last evening. And again, guys, I don't wanna get too much into who he's done this.
Yeah, yeah, totally.
But, but, but essentially what we're gonna do is, look, we've all authorized and we've agreed. If we can find a way to get the closing time shifted to 2, then we need to do it. But there's a, there's only so many avenues to pursue to, to get there. And, um, we gotta do that. We're doing that. There's a, there's a path. There's a, there's a process. We need to follow through. We still have to do something. And so, you know, I do think there's been effective means in the past where there was better collaboration and communication between the bars and the police. If we can re-facilitate that type of collaboration, um, I think that will go a long ways towards starting to build that infrastructure of, of public safety, entertainment. And again, I don't know how to solve the problem that people have been losing their minds. I, I don't know how to solve that. But the fact that people have weapons really concerns me. And that is a different scenario. That is different than three years ago. There is something fundamentally that's changed. Maybe, maybe I'm ignorant and maybe they were there before.
National, I think it's a national thing.
No, it's national, but the city.
World, world.
Yeah, but the bubble got burst, right?
Yeah, totally.
That's the most terrific thing that's ever happened in this community since I was born in 1970. And I, I still tear up when I think about, um, what our policemen did.
Yeah, well, we appreciate your collaborative approach. That's, in my opinion, the best way to find the right solution and the right path forward, you know? Get, get everybody's expertise together. And, um, that's when we solve these kind of problems. So we really appreciate everything you do for the city and this New Year's Eve extravaganza and savor downtown. So.
Yeah, amen. And, uh, we're gonna keep doing it. There's gonna be even more special events next year. And, uh, we're bringing, uh, a revised look and feel of outdoor dining where we're gonna be replacing the existing concrete blocks with, with formed concrete, uh, that, uh, we're basically building off of work that Fort Miller Company did with Greenwich, Connecticut. I think we have similar aesthetics as Greenwich, Connecticut. So I think it's something that people are gonna buy in on.
Yeah, you, you've really been, you've really been a champion of the downtown, you know, the small businesses downtown and the eateries and some of the city.
You get rid of the, the track that I know that we all love, um, it is our identity. And, and if we lose them, we're, guess what? Your taxes are tripling.
Yeah.
Um, that's basically.
And I've got nowhere to eat.
Right?
Yeah, I totally agree.
But anyway, I've taken enough of your time, I think. I mean, we, obviously, we could talk about a lot. And perhaps another day, there's some other topics that, that we might be able to focus in on. And, um, again, I just really appreciate the opportunity to talk about the, the upcoming, uh, New Year's Eve Fest. And, um, excuse me, New Year's Fest. I suffer trouble because I, I keep calling it first night, so I don't know what to do. But, um, but that being said, thanks, everybody. And, um, we're coming for you, Dan. Just coming for you.
Oh, no.
I'll get him on the stream, Dan, don't worry.
Scoreboard, buddy, scoreboard.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Moran. Have a great day.
All right.
Bye now.
Thanks.
Hey, hey, Robin, quick point. I emailed you here, uh, that Saratoga New Year's Fest, if you wanna flash it on a banner, just so people, you know, as we're talking, if people didn't catch it from Rob, it's just, it was pretty simple. Saratoga.
I'll drop it in comments.
And, uh, I emailed it to you.
Yeah, thank you. I'll drop it in comments. Um, all right, our very patient last guest, where is she? Abby, join us. Hello.
Hey, everybody.
Abby, CEO of Sar- I, Abby, you're the head of everything, but I always get your title wrong here. CEO and Editor-in-Chief of Saratoga Living?
Didn't she just freeze up?
Uh-oh. I think she froze. Oh, no. Well, she looks very.
See, I told you, it's the stream.
Oh, she's back. She's back. She's back. Abby, can you hear us? Abby? Brett Rowe.
Okay, there she is. Abby, we lose you a little bit here.
Can you hear us?
No.
Hmm.
And you hear the words that, no.
Um, I'm gonna remove her. Hold on, Abby, just one sec. Let's see.
Yeah.
How about now?
Can you hear us?
Oh, no. No bueno.
No.
Um.
Is it her end?
Yeah, I think.
Probably, since we're all working.
Yeah, I know. Shoot, Abby, we don't know what the technical problem is. I don't think you can hear us at all. She can't hear us.
She can't hear us. We're at almost.
Dan and Adam, talk amongst yourselves for a second.
Maybe we can get around next week.
Talk amongst ourselves.
I know.
Bills game Sunday.
Actually, I'll go, I'll go with you. So, let me, let me, Saratoga Living is having a gala, a cocktail party on December 15th at Putnam Place. Um, I'm lucky enough, and my organization's lucky enough to be honored there, as many other organizations as well. Uh, tickets are a hundred dollars. You can go to Saratoga's Living, uh, to buy these tickets. And it goes into why I'm wearing this, this, uh, this, this, this kit here, this body armor, is that we're be going back into Poland and Ukraine at the end of December. Um, Janu- it's actually Ukraine Christmas, Orthodox Christmas is January 7th, which is great, cause we're gonna be going the, you know, the days after the, the traditional Christmas, after the 25th. So we're doing, um, holiday letters of hope. So we're collecting holiday letters with, you know, I ask people to put $20 in them. Um, we're also collecting things like, uh, performance thermal underwear for people without power. Um.
Uh, we, Adam, can I pause you there for one second?
Yeah.
Um, the Russians have been taking out a lot of the infrastructure and power grid in Ukraine, correct? And so going into the winter, there are people with no heat, no water, and the sit, the circumstances are really dire.
Horrendous. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, much of the east of Ukraine now is, is, is on, when I say rolling blackouts, it might be a couple hours of, of, if that, a couple hours of, of electricity a day. They have some power stations where people can actually bring. So we're gonna be getting generators, ready for generator, meeting ready for, for power. You got Abby back?
I'm gonna try. I'll say, can you hear us, Abby? I think Abby is having audio issues on her end. Caroline Street doesn't wanna talk to Abby. Shoot.
Yeah.
All right. Well, um.
I have something on Abby's behalf. Adam, yours is much more important. When you're done, I'll add something on Abby's behalf.
All right.
But we keep going. Yours is much more important.
Yeah, so, so we're gonna be bringing, as you can see, we're gonna be bringing letters. Um, we're gonna be bringing, because people are, are freezing in their, their homes. There's a gymnastic team of girls aged, I think, eight to 11. And, and when the, when the sirens go off, they actually go to the basement of the building to do gymnastics to, to alleviate the stress of bombs falling around them. So the, the, I talked to the, the coaches, it's a mother I met in the, in the refugee centers. We're gonna be bringing them warm gear. So when they're in the dark in the basements under flashlights, they have, they're, they're at least not freezing. Um, you know, we talked to, there's the, 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 these communist block buildings, uh, they, they have no electricity, so they all have to dig, they're drinking trenches out back for the winter for toilets. So it really is on the east. It's horrendous there. We're going with some guys who've been medical trainers on the frontline, training the, the Ukrainian medical team. So, uh, you can support me by going to this event, buying tickets, uh, on the 15th. You can donate money. You can drop off either the hand warmers, uh, long underwear or letters at the inner Saratoga up till, you know, in December 26th. And this, all this stuff is gonna be pushed out to the Ukraine, to the frontline of the, the people and the men and women who are out there who are either fighting or freezing. Uh, we're gonna bring them as much comfort as we can. So I think, go ahead.
Keep going, sorry. No, no, two quick things. One, I was reading about how, um, the Ukrainian soldiers on the front lines, when they're sleeping at night, they don't wanna have any heat because the drones, the Russian drones will pick up on the heat and be able to, you know, kill them, basically. So that's terrifying. So they're freezing cold. Also, I just wanted to go back to why we're talking about the Saratoga Living event. First of all, Saratoga Living's holiday issue has just come out. So everyone should go pick it up. There's a lot of great content in there. But also Saratoga Living, every December, um, hosts Capital Region Gives Back. And it's at Putnam Place next Thursday, and it honors, um, a list of people in the Capital Region who have really been transformative in the volunteerism and, um, uh, commitment they have made to various nonprofit organizations and various causes such as Adam and the, the war in Ukraine. And so this is just an incredible night to honor those folks and, um, support all these great causes and, and just celebrate all the, um, incredible things that happen in this community through, you know, people's just generosity and commitment to doing good. So you can go to saratogaliving.com and there's a link to Eventbrite if you wanna get a ticket. We will be there. Dan, you better be there, right? You're gone.
I, um, I will definitely try.
All right. I don't know if I'm gonna accept that answer. But we, we can't wait to celebrate Adam and I think it's gonna be a wonderful event. So everybody check it out, saratogaliving.com, grab a ticket, come celebrate. We can party. We can, Adam, are you gonna bring us all slack jackets? Cause I would maybe like to wear one.
Uh, I, I, I have, I have more than one.
Does it come in a black and can I put my own stickers on?
Actually, I, yeah, yeah, you have the, you have the kit, the patches, but, um, hold on, where's my black one? Hold on.
Oh, you do have a black one? I was kinda joking.
There you go.
Oh, yes.
They're as heavy as, but.
I know, that reminds me, I would have to wear one when I went out, um, on ride-alongs to the police department, but I actually find it rather calming. Like a weighted blanket. Yes, like a, kind of like a weighted blanket.
They're heavy. Actually, the, 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 the plates that they need over in Ukraine are level four. And I believe the, the, the police use level three. Dan, you know what level the, the standard issue police?
Um, I, boy, I'm out of my world. It used to be, uh, uh, one was bad, you know, two, two was sufficient and three was top end is.
Yeah, yeah, but four, they need four stops the Russian, the Russian bullets. So they're illegal in New York, so none of these are level four, but.
All I know is that I would totally forget that I was wearing it and I would go into like Price Chopper to use the bathroom and I'd be walking in and people giving me like a side eye. And I'm like, what's that? And I'd be like, oh, wait, I look like I'm going into combat. Yeah, forgot about that. Anyhow, should we move on to our quick cheers and jeers for the week and then wrap up?
Uh, yeah, really quickly, just cause Abby couldn't make it. I just wanna give them, this is not as monumental as what we just talked about. They're having an event tonight at, um, at Bailey's for single in Saratoga, the ugly sweater edition. I wanna give them a plug because I love Saratoga Living. They're kind of a, a glue to this community, at least from the social end of things, kinda what you used to do, Robin. So, uh, tonight, single in Saratoga, ugly sweater, 7 to 9:30 at Bailey's. Uh, Abby, I wanna make sure we did that for you. So yes.
Yeah, and that's for all the single ladies, single men. It's freaking brutal to be dating. It's brutal to be dating in the COVID environment. So a singles event is always like awesome. So check it out tonight and, um, get your, uh, get your single and mickle on, really.
Cool.
All right, let's go to cheers and jeers, friends. What do we have this week? Cheers and jeers?
I'll jump in if nobody's, uh.
Yeah, go for it.
Ready? Um, we talked about earlier, I'm gonna be quick here, the three to two vote against the, uh, the convoluted 2:00 AM, uh, proposal. And I'm not necessarily for a 4:00 AM. I, I, I see the logic, but as we said earlier, um, that was not the way to go. And I'm not gonna slam, uh, Mayor Kim and Montanino. They're, they're trying something, but it just was wrong. It was not the way to go. So a cheer that that, uh, failed. Um, another cheer to my Buffalo Bills, cause they're on a three-game win streak and they're playing the dreaded Jets. Shame on you, uh, Dylan, uh, for not supporting New York State's only team. Um, but you know, that, that goes back within decades. So I do respect the Jets fans. And, um, I think that, that's it for me.
Adam, what do you have?
All right, for cheers, I will stick with a common theme. The Times, uh, man of the, and, and people of the year is Vladimir Zelensky and the spirit of the Ukrainian people. Um, I, again, I think it's well deserved and I, I, I think a lot of it ties back to, uh, what everybody around the world's doing. All the people who supported me in the beginning, just donating, um, e- either money or cards or first aid kits. Uh, I think it's a world right now that's making a difference and, and, you know, watching this, uh, David ride up against Goliath. So congratulations to Vladimir Zelensky, well-earned, the Titans fan of the year, the Ukrainian people and their spirit. Uh, my jeer is for, you, you know, I was listening to the Friday special meeting about the, um, about the resolution, the Karen Hagan resolution. And the only person who called in to support this, this, you know, this resolution was a Skidmore student. And, and, and also on that same note, on the city's, the Facebook page, when they posted something about this, the only person, you know, one of the Skidmore poly sci professors chimed in that he appreciates the transparency. And it seems like a party line. And I, I, I just have to jeer, you know, you know, college students are students. If, if you're a poly sci professor, you should be teaching them to think critically, not indoctrinating them with political views. And I don't know that Skidmore professors necessarily do that. I think the Skidmore kid called up, you could tell he was touting a party line, talking about transparency. Um, you know, he said, him and his girlfriend go downtown, so they appreciate the transparency. Not making really the connection of how the, how releasing these videos affected him going downtown. And, and, and for me, that just stunk of indoctrinating young learning minds with political views in this city. Um, and, and I think it's really doing these kids a disservice.
Well, on that note, I will say Commissioner Songvi is also a professor at Skidmore, and I think she's been doing a great job leading by example for those students. And the way she engages with the public, I know with us, has always been incredibly respectful, incredibly responsive. And she is great about having a disagreement, but being respectful about it and continuing to engage. And so hopefully that's maybe an example that can be more compelling for those kids.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I was not talking about Commissioner Songvi.
No, I know. I know you weren't. I know you weren't.
But it's, it's good to point that out. It's good to point that out.
Um, my cheer for the week is, for the year maybe, is Georgia. Cheers to Georgia. You're peachy. You gave me so much hope last night. What a brutal, brutal election cycle that was. I can't imagine campaigning and then finding out on the night of the election that you've gotta go for a little bit of a month. I would, uh, I would shoot myself. So I just cheers to them. Cheers to everyone who came out. That was amazing. Um, my jeer, I said it once, I'm gonna say it again. If you're a public servant of any kind, but especially on this hyper-local level, I don't care who contacts you that's a resident of Saratoga Springs. You should be respectful. At worst case scenario, maybe ignore them, but certainly don't respond like Mayor Kim did to me. Please stop contacting me. That's just unacceptable. Um, and I just had to laugh because when grown men who are like a bazillion years older, that they act like children, when I'm trying to be civil, it's just, you know, it's, I don't know, it's just beyond. So that would be my jeer for the week. Um, thank you, guys. This has been, whoa, we're over an hour. So it's, it's been a while, but we had so much to talk about. So that's all I got. What do you have? Anything in closing?
Nah, stay charming, Saratoga.
Thanks for watching.
Check out the Saratoga Podcast, anywhere you watch podcasts, Google Podcasts, Spotify, Amazon. We're everywhere, people. Oh, Adam bounced. All right, I guess we're bouncing. Bye, Dan. Thank you.